And I'll click that. And can someone say something really quickly? Just to see if uh, the audio is in my recording? Say hello, hello? It's not, so good thing you said it. There we go. Okay. Um, okay, so yeah, if I write here, like, is it okay? Like, if I say hello, is the quality alright?
Looks good to me.
Looks good to you. Alright, good. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. So, um, hello, everybody. Welcome to MTH 514 midterm session. Um, so I will be going through, like I said just a second ago, I'll be going through a bunch of questions that I prepared. Uh, I have textbook questions and lab problems and questions that people sent me. I'll just go through them. Um, I realize probably people have done some of these questions before, especially the lab ones, but hopefully me explaining it will be a little bit of added benefit. Um, and uh, strategies like that can be used on the test, of course. Um, so I also have to keep clicking Admit All, so hopefully hard to communicate with those people, I don't know. I'll just have to keep clicking Admit All. Okay. So, to begin, uh, my notes are available for this course. Well, actually, not for this course. So I took MTH 410 in the spring, which is basically this course with some addition at the end, but the beginning is the same. Um, so I have all my notes written for that already. That's from the spring. So if you go to my website, www.tutor.ca/notes, uh, and you click MTH 410 Statistics. Statistics. Um, that's where you can find my notes for this course. There's a little extra stuff, maybe. Not even really. There's not like, there's a few extra things, there's a few extra distributions and stuff like that. Um, yes, we are just beginning. Um, but uh, the, if there's anything like that you want to find, you can just Ctrl+F and find it, so. Anyways, that's where you'll find that. And I do have, like, I will write notes for this actual course once we get to new content, but I'm not gonna repeat myself in my notes, so. Do I have a good idea about what to expect on the exam? Well, I mean, uh, like, I was talking to someone earlier today, and this is kind of the conclusion we decided that would be pretty relevant. I'm not the professor, I'm not writing the exam, but this is what I think would be good to expect on the exam. I don't know. Um, did he say four questions? That's something we weren't sure. Did he confirm it's gonna be a four-question exam? Or did we not? Is that just, or am I just making that up? Let's see, does anybody know? Did he confirm any number of questions? He said minimum of four. I heard him say three. Three, four, or five. Okay, let's say four. Let's take the average. Um, so this is what I, I mean, this is what I think is probably a pretty reasonable thing. We're gonna have some kind of question with directly using the distributions. Right? Distributions. Um, and then part of that is probably gonna be some expected value question. Right? Um, then there's probably gonna be one where you need to use a series, right? Where you need to use the, uh, like, the infinite series formulas, because he put that on the formula sheet. He specifically added that to the formula sheet. There's probably gonna be a question like that. Um, then there's probably gonna be some sort of CDF. Um, CDF PMF function, right? Um, something along those lines, uh, because we learned that. And then some just sort of more straightforward, like, combinatorics. Um, I'll just say NCR. NCR questions, and PR question, something like this, right? That's my guess. I am not writing this exam. That is my guess of what, what I think is a reasonable thing that would be on this. Um, so, uh, we'll definitely go through all these things today together. And from there, we'll just, uh, you know, I'll be happy to answer any other questions people have, like that. So, coming into this, like, I'm a little, I'm a little worried that he's gonna put something kinda crazy on it, right? Like, that would be, that would be a little bit nerve-wracking if he did that, but uh, we'll see. We'll see what happens. So, to begin, I'll start with, um, something to get the ball rolling. Okay, we'll start, um, with just a review of, like, common formulas that I'll be referring to throughout this. So, uh, like, so that we make sure we're all on the same page with what the formulas are, right? Um, so let me just put it here. And if I use the formula wrong, you know, I. Um, where can I find the recording of this video? And when will you post it? I'll post it tonight. It's on my YouTube channel. So my YouTube channel is just my name. So we posted on YouTube, um, tonight, which is my YouTube again is. Um, so, I'd say, post it on. Post it on. Oh, yeah. So you can talk to each other? Yeah, I would like to do that. Uh, I didn't realize you couldn't talk to each other. Let me do that. Does anybody know how to do that? Uh, I will post the notes as well. Let me see if I can. Good chat. No, I don't want chat pre-post. Support, able annotations. Meeting info. I don't know how to, I do not know how to make it so that you can chat with each other. Oh, allow participants to chat. Yeah, yeah, it says allow participants to chat. Yeah, it says allow participants to chat. I don't, that's, yeah. Like, and that's checked, yes. That's like checked as yes. So, I'm not sure. Um. You can, of course, talk to me. Like, you can always, of course, just message me through it. I don't wanna waste too much time. Um, but there's, like, uh, yeah, if anybody has access to the Discord, like, the TYU Discord, you can, you can talk there. Um, I'll have that chat open here as well. Okay, I won't be, I'm not gonna be super good on it, but oh, I'd have it open. You can, of course, just talk to me. Um, okay, so let's start with, uh, going through the formulas that will be, you know, common. So, of course, uh, first one is like, probability of the event A union B is probability of A plus probability of B minus probability of A and B. Right? Uh, this will extend, as we expect, to three. It's like a triple union, so. We'll see that if we get to that. Uh, of course, probability of A is equal to one minus proba-, uh, probability A prime, I mean, it's one minus probability of A. Um, and other way around. And then also, an important formula is that we're gonna be using probability of A given B is equal to the probability of A and B over the probability of B. And this formula, um, we can decompose this part at the top here into probability of A and B is equal to the probability of A given B, uh, well, B given A is the more useful one. B given A times the probability of A. Um, and so altogether, we get a third formula, which is probability of A and B given B. Probability of B given A times the probability of A all over probability. This formula will be used a lot, like this last one here, so that's why I just took a second to derive it there. Um, yeah, prime, prime and the complement is the same thing. Yes, I don't know, I forget. That's not what he writes. I guess he writes complement, but yeah, fine. Um, this formula here is gonna be used a lot. So, basically, these last three are kind of the most important ones that we just gotta all remember, like this one, this one, um, and then also this one. Okay. Now that we have that dealt with, let's try, uh, let's try one that's, like, not too bad. Uh, so the question is, I'll just take a screenshot. I forget if this is from, I guess this is from the homework, yeah. So, you roll a die five times. What is the probability that at least one value is observed more than once? It's gonna show I'm recording on my end, yes. Um, probability that at least one value is observed more than once. So, in questions like this, you have to, oh, camera's covering question, thank you. But probably not much of it. Um, so in situations like this, you need to define your own events. Like, what does the event, what is the event we're talking about here? So, to do that, we're gonna define A, my event A, to be, uh, the event um, that, um, there is a repeated value. There is a repeated value. Right? And so what is the probability that at least one value is observed more than once? We're looking for the probability of A. Um, yeah. Um. So, to find this probability, we're gonna have to do it, it's easier to do it backwards, right? Where it's easier to say, well, okay, what's the probability of this not happening? Because you can calculate that more. Uh, and do one minus that probability. That's kind of the logic. That's the best, the best way to go around here. The probability of A is one minus the probability of A complement, right? A complement in this case represents, uh, the, the event that there is no repeated value. Right? That's the, that's what probably A complement is, right? So that, we'll find that. If we find that probability, right, then we have, uh, uh, one minus that is the probability we want. So, to figure this out, we're gonna do one minus. Well, we can actually write this as a fraction, because we can actually figure out how many possible outcomes do we have in the total sample space? And how many possible outcomes actually match this event? Like, that's possible to do in this case. So, we roll a die five times, right? There are six possible outcomes from a die roll. So, the total number of possible outcomes from this experiment is six to the power of five. Six times, six times, six times, six. Five times. And the total number of outcomes that actually match our, um, event A complement, well, that would be, well, for the first die roll, you can get any number, right? And we still match this event, right? So you can get any number. So there's six options for the first one. In the next die roll, you can't get whatever you landed on. So if in the first, if in the first die roll, you land on a two, in the next die roll, it doesn't matter what you land on, as long as it's not a two, to stay in this event, A complement. So we have five options for the next die roll. And the next one, we have four. The next one, we have three. The next one, we have two. Um, but there's only, so it's not, well, you could do times one if you want, but there's five die rolls, right? So you do it once, twice, three times, four times, five. Uh, and yeah, you just work this out. And you work this out, this is one minus, uh, this would be five over fifty-four, which is, uh, forty-nine over fifty-four. So the strategy here was, I can actually count the number of outcomes in my sample space, and I can also, I can also count the number of outcomes in my, like, in my event. I gotta power the pen. How do I do that? Let's throw it there. Ah, okay. I'm okay. I got it. I got it back. Um, I do that more often than you think. So, um, yeah, so the strategy here was, I can actually count, how many outcomes do I have in my sample space? How many outcomes do I have in my event, um, which is a subset? And I can just do the ratio like that, right? So, so that's, that's the answer. Probability of A, this A, is this. The formula for the fraction I made is basically just, like, the top is the number of outcomes, number of outcomes in, uh, A or A complement, and number of out, uh, outcomes in the sample space S, right? This is the probability of A complement. Generally, that's the probability of anything, is the number of outcomes in that divided by the number of outcomes in S. What gives it away that we have a complement to do? Um, well, if you didn't do the complement, the event that there is a repeated value, um, there might be a way to do that that way as well. Like, we could try it. Um, let's see. It, what gives it away is that I know how to calculate, um, like, what gives it away, I guess, is that each, each time you do the experiment, like, each time you do a part of the experiment, there are less possibilities of what's allowed to happen. Right? Uh. The word at least, at least means compliment. Yeah, generally, like, usually when you see the word at least, right? Yeah, generally when you see the word at least, um, that means you're gonna be doing a compliment. That's true, actually. Because they, you could get, what is the probability that at least one value is observed more than once? So you could have one value observed more than once. You could have two values observed more than once, three, four, and five, or six. You have six, I guess, but you don't wanna calculate all that, so it's easier to just calculate one case, the case in which nothing is repeated. Yeah, that's generally, that's what it is. So this, this tells us, tells us to use complement. Um, yeah, there definitely is a way to do it without, without a compliment, but I won't do it just because I don't wanna waste time. But, um, uh, yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly right. Um, okay, so, uh, let's continue. We have, uh, that question done. Let's try the next one. The next one I wanna do is the dishes question from, uh, the, from the lab. So, let's give it a try. Well, if I can get a screenshot of it, that would be good. Maybe I'll just get it here. Uh, lab three? Is it lab three? No, lab two. Lab two. Okay. I have a lab two. Or maybe I have it listed wrong. Lab two is. This one here. So, uh, yeah, let's try to solve this together. There's quite a bit of, I don't know, finicky business you have to do to solve this one, but, uh, it's definitely possible, like, obviously possible. That's not saying much, but. Um, so let's read it together. A, B, and C live in an apartment together. A gets up in the morning before B, and C is up last. So, the, the order that will, will work in is A goes first, then B, then C. So, A encounters, one hundred percent chance encounters a sink full of dirty dishes and washes them with a fifty percent probability. Similarly, A, after A has left, on encountering dirty dishes, so, given that B encounters dirty dishes, B washes them with the probability of, sorry, given that A didn't do the dishes, B washes them with a one-third probability. And given that B and A didn't do the dishes, then C will do it with, uh, one over four prob. So we're getting lazier and lazier here about who's gonna do the dish. Um, so, uh, let's try to figure out, well, the question is, what is the probability that the dishes get done? Right? So the way I define my events for this, which is not exactly the same way that the teacher defined his events in the solution, is, I just said, okay, A is the event that, um, A does the dishes. Does the dishes. B is the event that B does the dishes. And C is the event that C does the dishes. Right? So, what facts do we know right off the bat here? Well, we know that the probability that A does the dishes is one-half, because it's guaranteed that he will see the dish. So the probability that he does it is a half. Next, what we know is the probability that B does the dishes, given that A didn't do the dishes, A prime. Prime, complement, same thing, right? So, given that A didn't do the dishes, the probability that B does it is one-third. That's from the question. So, one-half, one-third. And then finally, we also know that the probability that C does the dishes, given that A didn't do the dishes and B didn't do the dishes, is one over four. But we, we actually know a little bit more than this. We actually know, like, a few extra steps, too. We also know that the probability that B doesn't do the, sorry, that B does the dishes, given that A does the dishes, well, that's just zero. B won't do the dishes if A did the dishes. Right? And similarly, the probability that C does the dishes, given that A did the dishes or B did the dishes, is also zero. These are gonna be useful in our formulas. Like, we do need to know these, these probabilities. So, yeah, we just need to know those. But we can gather all of that just from the, just from how I define my events, and also, um, the, the question, the words of the question. If anybody has any questions, feel free to message me on the Zoom chat. You can also unmute if you'd like, if you're able to. Oh, yeah, you are able to. Also unmute if you'd like. Raise your hand, I guess, I can answer. Um, yeah. Um, so, we know all these facts, right? We know, uh, I define my events like this. We also know all these facts about what's happening. Now, what's our goal, right? Our goal is, what is the probability that the dishes get done? Not by anybody in particular, just what is the probability that the dishes get done? So, that A does the dishes, or B does the dishes, or C does the dishes. That's what I'm trying to find, right? Um, so, from here, it's not too bad, right? Like, from here, it's just sort of breaking everything apart into a bunch of pieces. So, the triple union is gonna be probability of A plus probability of B plus probability of C minus probability of A, uh, and B minus probability of A, um, and C, minus probability of B and C plus probability, probability of A, probably my camera's covering now, isn't it? Uh, A and B. A and B and C. But, these are all zero. More than one person does not do the dishes. Nobody half does the dishes, right? A and B, the probability of A doing dishes and B doing the dishes? No, that's, they won't have, A and B will not do the dishes. It'll either be one or the other, or neither, C could do it, but it definitely won't be both. Definitely won't be this pair, this one will disappear, and definitely won't be all three of them. Uh, how do you go about properly defining your events? Because for some questions, if your definition for the event is wrong, then it'll become much harder. That's true, right? So there's, most questions have many ways you can define the events to solve the question. Um, like, there isn't just one way to define your events. Uh, I, yeah, I don't know. What, basically, how I like to do it is, I like to just say, I like to define my events so that I can get the most of these as possible. Like, these are just like little facts we have in probabilistic terms here, right? So with conditional, um, with, um, uh, dependence and stuff like this, right? So, yeah, that's how I like to decide, right? The events are disjointed, right? Yeah, the events are disjointed. A and B, there's no overlap. Like, A and B will not do the dishes ever. It'll just be one or the other. How did you, how did you know to find A or B or C? Well, that's the question saying, what is the probability that the dishes get done? So, uh, remember, A is the event that A does the dishes. B is the event that B does the dishes. C is the event that C does the dishes. So, if the dishes get done, then one of these things happened, right? Either A or B or C did the dishes. So that's how I knew how to find this. So, so perfect. We, we now know that, I can just rewrite it, the, the probability, well, the probability we're looking for is probability of A plus probability of B plus probability of C. Right? What's probability that A does the dishes at all? Plus probability that B does dishes at all, plus probability that C does dishes. Um, okay, great, but how do we do this, right? How do we do that, like, how do we figure this out? So, let's just break it up part by part here, right? So I'll do probability of A first, right? So I'll say probability of A. And. Probability of A is easiest. What is the probability that A does the dishes? It's guaranteed that he will see the dishes, right? So, what is the probability that A does dishes? One-half. There's a fifty percent chance that he'll do the dishes. There's no other complication. That's it. We know that. We know the probability of A is one-half. Great, that was easy. Now, probability of B. Alright, let's look at that now. Probability of B. So, the way I did this is, okay, well, if B does the dishes, this depends on if A did the dishes or not, right? Because if A did the dishes, then probability of B doing it is zero. Probably, i- if A didn't do the dishes, then the probability of B doing it is one-third, right? I think it was one-third, right? If A didn't do the dishes, probability of B doing it is one-third. So, we have to account for this, right? To find the total probability of B doing the dishes. So, we do this by breaking B into probability of B given A times the probability of A plus the probability of B given not A times the probability of not A. So, what I mean here is, this is basically, what's the probability that A do, what's the probability that B does the dishes, given that A did it? And then here is, what's the probability that B does the dishes, given that A doesn't do it? Those are the only two possibilities. A either did the dishes or didn't do the dishes, right? So, the, it's not like there's another possible case that A half did the dishes, right? Like, we're not counting for that. Um, so yeah, so that's, that's, uh, like, these are the only two cases, so we do it like. Uh, let me just see, I have a question in the chat. Uh, just in reference, I sent you my approach to Discord. I would really appreciate if you could take a look at it during the session. Why don't you explain? Need to explain anything? I can use that. Okay, sounds good. Ahmed, I will, uh, I'll take a look at your solution after I've done my solution, then I'll, I'll take a look at your solution. It's apparently different, so we'll see. Um, so here, we have, uh, this probability now to deal with, but it's not too bad, right? So this probability, B given A, is zero. What's the probability that B does the dishes, given that A already did the dishes? Well, B will not do the dishes if A already did the dishes, so that's zero. Go away. And these probabilities, we, we do already know. So this is just, um, probability. How do I know to use this formula? Because the probability that B does the dishes depends on one thing, if A did the dish. And there's only two possible cases. A either did the dishes or didn't do the dish. So that's where total probability kinda comes in, right? Either that this, this term here accounts, oops, my headphones died, so I'll just be on speaker now. Let me, uh, let me switch this to speakers quickly. Yeah, I think it's on speaker. If, if someone tries to talk to me and I don't hear it, then just type in the chat and I'll, I'll fix my. Oh, I think Vic is trying to talk and I don't hear, so. Give me, let me try to, uh. Let me try to, microphone. I'll just do that. Can you say something? Yes, I hear you. Good. Hopefully there's not too much. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. And then I'll put this here. Okay. So, yeah, okay, good. Got it. That's why, that's why I broke into two cases. Probability of B given not A, so, okay, what's probability that B does the, B does the, um, dishes, given that A didn't do the dishes? That's probability is one-third, right? Someone asked us to scroll up, so I'll just. Roll up here quickly. Um, then that's one-third times probability that A didn't do the dishes. That's one-half, right? Or I'll, I'll be clear here, it's one minus one-half, right? Which is one-half. This one-half. I'm just gonna use colors here, hopefully, to help understand where all these terms are coming from. Alright, that's that. I know a lot of colors, but at least you can backstep. Why are we multiplying the probability of A and the probability of not A? What, uh, why are we multiplying the, multiplying the probability of A and the probability of not? Well, I, like, what do you mean? Here I have probability of not A, probability of not A, probability A, probability A. Because again, this term here, this term here, if I just bracket it up, right? Term number one. Accounts for accounts for, uh, A, A doing the dishes. This term, right? Number two. Accounts for A not doing the dish. Oh, sorry, off, it's off screen. Not doing dish. Um, and those are the only two options. Yes, it'll be recorded. That's the law of total probability. That's the law of total probability. That is the law of total probability. So, I'll continue. So this is just one over six here, right? That's probability of B, one over. Um, next, we have to figure out probability of C. So that's the last one. Definitely ran out of color, it's odd. Yeah. So, probability of C. Well, what are the possibilities for C, from C's perspective, right? Well, either one of A or B did the dishes, or one of A or B didn't do the dishes. Sorry, or, or they both didn't do the dishes, I mean. Sorry, that's what I mean to say, right? Either A or B, one of them did the dishes, or neither of them did the dish. So, the probability of C, the probability that C does the dishes depends on that. It's the probability that C does the dishes, given that A or B, as in, either A or B did the dishes, times the probability of A or B plus the probability of C, given that neither of them did the dishes, that A didn't do the dishes and B didn't do the dish, times the probability that A didn't do the dishes and B didn't. Right? Uh, let's make sure that's what I wrote here, probability of C given A or B, da-da-da-da-da. Yes, there you go. So that's the probability for C. Again, from C's perspective, either the first two roommates did the dishes, whichever one, doesn't matter, or the first roommate didn't do the dishes, right? Um, so that's how I'm breaking up C's probability, the two pieces. So, now, uh, we gotta figure out these parts, right? What's the probability that C does the dishes, given that A or B did the dish? Zero! The, C will not do the dishes if A or B did the dishes. We just forget about that term, that's fine. Now, what's the probability that C does the dishes, given that A didn't do the dishes and B didn't do the dishes? That's what we have in the question here. We got that, one over four. That's one over four. Now we need the probability that A doesn't do the dishes and B doesn't do the dish, right? So, the, this is the probability we need to find. So let me just, I just like, again, I'll just sort of like, highlight to make sure we understand what's what. That. Committing. So, from here, um, probability of A prime and B prime, right? Well, once again, we can break this up into, I'm looking at my notes here, this is the probability, yeah, that, yeah, we can break this up into probability that B doesn't do the dishes, given that A doesn't do the dishes, times the probability that A doesn't do the dish. This is the formula. This is just the formula I, I explained right here, right? You can alternatively also write this as the probability that A doesn't do the dishes, given, well, actually, you can't do that, because the probability that A Because the probability that A doesn't do the dishes, given that B doesn't do dishes, that doesn't make even sense to say. Because the, we have an order here, right? We have an order that has to be maintained. So probably that A doesn't do the dishes, given that B doesn't do the dishes. I, I don't even know how you'd even figure that out. I don't think that even can be assigned a number. Because the order doesn't make sense. So this is how you'd have to write. Probability that B doesn't do dishes, given that A doesn't do the dishes, times probability that A doesn't do. The way I like to remember what should go here is like, it's like a fraction, like the denominator and the numerator are gonna cancel. So you're left with probability of B prime. That's all that's. That's not actual math, it's just kind of a way to remember which one is the one that's gonna be. Which one's the probability we're looking for? So we're looking for probability that B doesn't do. Um, so, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, by that, uh, dash, is it complement?
Yes, compliment, yes, yes, yes. That means compliment, yeah. I should have that big on the screen somewhere. Um, for solving for probability of B, is that Bayes' rule rearranged? Probability of B, like this guy? It's more like total probability. There are only two options for, from B's perspective. Either A did the dishes or A didn't do the dishes. So you have to account for those two cases, and that's the rule of total probability. I should have included that in my first note. I'll, I'll write that, yeah. I'll write it now, to be honest. So the rule is, oh, I opened Notion, but hopefully that's gonna be. Total probability rules. So it's in my notes here from, from when I took statistics. But, uh, yeah, here it is basically, right? So the probability for any events A and B, right? If you're looking for the probability of B, then, uh, like, there's only two options. Either A, A was true or A didn't, wasn't true. And you can break B up into the probability that, of B and A, plus probability of B and not A. And then those can be broken up into these conditionals, right? Into these, um, dependency things, right? Like B given A, B given not. So that's your total probability rule. And for more detailed explanation, uh, definitely check my notes out, right, on that. But yeah, or just ask me now. Um, so now we need probability that B doesn't do the dishes. So this is one over four still. This is the probability of C we're looking for. Probably of C, probably that B doesn't do the dishes, given that A didn't do the dish, right? Well, let's look at it here, right? Probab- where are we? Probably that B does the dishes, given that A didn't do the dishes, is one third. So the probability that B doesn't do the dishes, given that A didn't do the dishes, is two thirds. It's two thirds chance that he won't do the dish, right? Put that there. There's only a one third chance that he will. So two thirds. Probability that A doesn't do the dishes, we've already been through this, it's. So actually, just to be clear, I'll, one minus one third. Times one minus. Which will end up being, um, uh, well, one over four times two over three times one over two, which is two over twelve, which is one over six. I opened it there, right? Yeah, one of, sorry, not two over twelve, which is one over twelve. Yeah, one over. And so finally, we, from my original equation, the probability that the dishes get done, which is the probability that A does the dishes, or B does the dishes, or C does the dishes, what is the probability of A? What's probability of B? What's probability of C? Which you've already been through, is one half plus, um, what was B? I'd forget, one sixth. Plus one half, which is three over. Two, zero, seven, five. So that's the final answer. For the probability of C equation, why did you use probability of C, A or B? Probably of C, A and B? Well, so, so the question is, when I'm, when I'm using, when I do probability of C, why is it probability of C? Um, probability of C given A or B? Plus probability of C given not A or not B? That's what I wrote, right? Um, but the commenter is suggesting that I should write probability of C and, C given A and B, plus probability of C given A and, um, A, not A and, or I guess maybe you mean A and B, like, not, this didn't happen like that. So the reason this doesn't work is because probably that C does the dishes, given that they both did the dishes. Again, this is, this is a situation where it just doesn't make sense. Like, they won't both do the dishes, this will never happen, right? But also, from C's perspective, it doesn't matter who did the dishes. It just matters that one of the two does the dishes. It's kind of like in the professor's solution, he introduced another variable, which was, do you see the dishes, right? Or I forget what it was, like, witness the dishes or something like that? Does he see the dishes? That's what he was saying. Um, this is my version of it, like, C, there was probably that C does the dishes, given that C sees the dishes. Well, C will, I don't want to introduce another variable, C will see the encounters, yeah. What's the probability that C does the dishes, given that C encounters the dishes? Well, I don't want to introduce another variable, but I'm just gonna say, what's the probability that C does the dishes, given that, um, A or B did the dishes? Or what's the probability that C does the dishes, given that A or B, A doesn't do the dishes? Oh, a- and, so it's supposed to be handy. And B doesn't do. Right, and this is supposed to be four. So this is like encountering the dishes. This is like encounter. And this is not encounter. Right, if A didn't do dishes and B didn't do dishes, then C will encounter them. But if A or if, what is? If A didn't do the dishes and B didn't do the dishes, then C will encounter it. If A did the dishes or B did the dishes, then C will not encounter them. That's all that C, C sees from its perspective. Right, so that's why I broke into those two. Basically, it's not encounter and encounter, those are the two cases.
Um, so basically, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, so basically, you can't have A intersect B, because now, like, only one person does the, does the dishes at a time.
Yeah.
Like, you can't be like two people doing it at once.
It can't be two people doing it at once, exactly, yeah.
So it's like one person sees it and then the other person sees it later. So it's like, independent, like, uh, I don't know if I'm using the right word, but it's like, independent events like occurring one after another, not like things happening at the same time.
Yeah, like, independence, not the word there, they are dependent events, but yes, like, they cannot happen, they're mutually exclusive. They're mutually exclusive, that's what it is, right?
Right, right, that's the word.
That's right, they're mutually exclusive. Exactly. Okay. Uh, I'll move on to part B, if everybody's okay with that. Or if, if just like, if I wanna, someone wants me to explain a part of this again, like, why did I, I do that? Otherwise, I'll move on to part B. A to Ramadan, you're up.
Okay, can I just ask you? So for part A, uh, I'm not sure, I've sent you a message like through the, uh.
Uh, I, I, I didn't read it yet, but I saw it, yeah.
Oh, okay, perfect. Um, but I could, should I just ask about it later on towards the end of the session?
Let me, yeah, well, what, like, you had another method of solving this, right? Yeah.
So I just don't take everyone's side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let me look at it really quick. How about this? I'll, let me do part B. Let me do part B, so I finish the question, and then we can look at you quickly, okay?
That's a better idea.
Okay, okay, yeah. Uh, let's do part B quickly. So the part, part B is very simple. If the dishes get done, what is the probability that C was the one that washed them? Alright, that's the probability we're looking for here. If the dishes get, whoa. If the dishes get done, what is the probability that C washed them? Well, the, the probability we're looking for is probability that C does the dishes, given that the dishes get done. So either A or B or C. That's the probability we're looking for. C, given that someone did the dish. Okay. Well, just using our, um, uh, yeah, just using our, uh, Bayes' theorem, right? Bayes' theorem is, you can flip the order around, so probability that A or B or C, given C, times probability of C over probability of A or B or C. This is just a Bayes' theorem application. This equation that I derived, right? Right? Um, yeah, B is on the bottom and then B is on the bottom, yeah, okay. So now, well, let's work this out. Probability that A did the dishes, or B did the dishes, or C did the dishes, given that C did the dishes. There's a 100% chance that one of the three people did the dishes, given that C did the dishes. There's 100, C did the dishes. That's it. Right? So we have one times probability of C, we already calculated that. Probability of C was 1/12. Uh, is that what I wrote? C, yeah, 1/12. And then probability of A or B or C, probability of someone doing the dishes, well, that's three over four. So one over nine. But does that make sense that that's our?
Yeah, sorry, how is there, uh, one? Like, is it, why is it one?
This guy, this guy's one.
Okay.
This one's one.
Oh, okay.
Right, so probability that A, like, how likely is it that A or B or C did the dishes, given that we know C did the dishes?
Also, like, they've already been washed, like, they've already been done, so using that the probability is one, knowing that.
Right. Definitely, one of these three people did the dishes. See, we actually know exactly who did the dishes, C did the dishes.
So that's what I mean, so like, the dishes are 100% done, given that somebody did them.
The, the, like, so, someb- somebody did the dishes, given that we know someone did the dishes, basically.
Okay.
So, like, the dishes are done, 100% chance, 100% certain. Dishes are done. Are done. Given that, we know, we know who did the dishes, basically. We know who did the dishes.
Okay. So that one's kind of certain, and that's what.
Right? That's what this purple is kind of saying.
Okay.
Uh, okay, uh, and then, well. Any of them could be doing it, we know C did it. Wait, wouldn't it just be the probability of C doing the dishes? Yeah, probability of, probability of C do, oh no, for, for this? Well, probability of C doing dishes is 1/12, right? But again, there's no probability here. Like, probability that the dishes are done, given that we know who did the dishes, is 100% chance. We know, the 100% chance that the dishes are done. Right? Not necessarily by C. Just, they're done. We know they're by, done by C, but. The dishes are done, because we know who did them. But this probability is one. Okay. Great. So, uh, let's see A to Ramadan, your, your solutions. Here, this is yours. Do you mind if I put it on the screen? Oh, you do mind, or you don't mind? I can't tell.
I'm totally fine, I'm totally fine.
Totally fine, okay. I wasn't sure what he asked me. Um, so let's see, let's see, uh, let's see what would happen here. Because it's probably also a valid way of solving. Did you get the same answer as me? Three over four and one over seventy-two.
No, so, okay, so I'm just extending to what's happening. So I got from, uh, I defined this events in a slightly different way.
Yeah.
Um, is a probability that A sees the dishes.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean that I actually.
Yeah.
Um, and then I tried finding P A and P B and P C.
Yeah.
Um, I got P C correct in one method, but in the second method, I couldn't get it. Uh, which is like method two, method two, find P C, yeah, this one.
Yeah, well, you got one third for P C here. Oh, no, no, but that's different than my number, that'll be different than mine, yeah.
Hmm.
Okay. Yes.
Hmm. If you think, uh, we should be doing it like afterwards, so as events, like, do something.
I will spend, I will spend two minutes looking through it. And if it's more than, if it's a more than a two-minute operation, then we will leave it to the end, okay?
I guess so.
Let's just look very quickly. You defined your events. A is the probability that A sees the dishes, like, sorry. A, probability of A is the probability that A sees the dishes. So the event A is the event that A sees the dishes. Event B is the event that B sees the dishes. Event C is the event that C sees. So, um, we definitely know the probability of A is one, certainly, right? Because A will definitely see the dish, yeah. Probability of B, probably that B sees the dishes, depends on if A did the dishes. Right? So probability that B sees the dishes is one, so what did you write here? Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So you wrote, yeah, that's fine. Probability that B sees the dishes is one minus probability that B doesn't see the dishes. He's compliment. One minus the probability, what did you write here? If B doesn't see the dishes, A, hmm, what does W mean exactly?
Um, like, the dishes, uh, are washed. So, so, so method one in, in, from both P B and P C are correct. It's just method two from P C is wrong, and that's my concern.
Okay, yeah. I think it might be something with how you're defining W, but let, let's, let's look at probability C. So you, you said probably A is this, you found probability of B is one half, right? There's a 50% chance that B will see the dishes, which, which makes sense, because there's a 50% chance that A will do the dish, right? Um, so now, let's try to figure out, what's the probability that C will see the dishes? Um, so what you did is, is probably that C will see the dishes is one minus the probability that C doesn't see the dishes. Right? Um, which is equal to one minus the probability that, um, probability that, yeah, one minus probability that A, A and W, so A, uh, okay, you might be able to get away with that. Probability of B and W, it just, what is the event W? The event W is a little bit ambiguous as to what you mean, right? I, I know, I know you mean that W is A washes the dishes, but here you're using the same variable to mean that B washes the. Right? That, so, so you got the right answer presumably for the first one here. Um, but that is probably the locate, the, the, where the error comes from, is because that is not exactly defined so well. A and W, that A sees the dishes and washes them, is one half, isn't it? What did you write here, one half? One half times one?
Yeah, um, yeah, 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 that's one half times.
So one half, and probably that B sees the dishes and washes them is one over three. Times a half, why times a half? Because it's the probability that the dishes are washed, given that B, like, this is what you did?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I. Um, probably the B, the, the dishes are washed by B, like, dishes are washed by B, given that B does the dishes. Yeah. Okay, which is, which is one third times a half, which, sure. Um, yeah, I think, I think your issue is, is how probably that C does the dishes, one minus.
Adam.
Yeah.
How come in some points, like, we do like, uh, probability of B and W, for example, here? Sometimes it's equals to probability of W and B, uh, multiply with the probability of B, and then divided by the, uh, probability by the W. But in this case, we don't have that, the division.
You mean like, yeah, like, probably, like, if I'm looking for the probability, I would write it as probability of A given W, times probability of W over probability of A, like this?
Yes, yes.
Right? Well, this is when you're trying to relate it to probability of, probability of W given A. That's when you're trying to find that, right?
Yeah.
But we don't know either one here. So here, we're just starting to, trying to combine the events that A did it and W also did it. Like, that's, those are the two events. We don't know this information or this information. Right, at, at the moment. So that's, that's basically why. Yeah, you could, you could definitely, like, you could turn this into probability of A and W. This is probability of A given W times probability of W. You could directly turn into that if you want.
But we cannot put a division on it for.
Yeah, if we're dividing, then we're trying to relate this to that. That's what we're trying, if we're dividing. But we, we are trying to.
Okay, and also one more thing for, for, for your own solution for this one?
Yeah.
So we had the probability of B and the A for one third. So we had the probability of B and the A for one-third. But then, when you were calculating it, you put a probability of B and the A complement with the same value. How did it work?
Uh, so, we said probably of
So if you go down?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, a little up. So here, you, uh, you have the probability of B and the A complement.
Oh, B given A complement, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, as a one, one-third. But this value is given as a probability of B and the A.
Well, this is the prob- this is the probability of B given A prime.
Be given. Is that a B given? Because if you go up, I don't think you put as a B given A, oh, never mind.
Be given A prime, yeah, yeah, be given A prime. Good, that'll solve the confusion?
Yeah.
Thanks, okay, okay, no. Okay, we'll, we'll continue looking at this solution after, like, I don't want to spend, I don't, I want to move on to new questions. But, I think, I think it's an issue, the reason you're, you're getting some kind of, something's wrong. Like, I'm sure all your steps are correct, like, I, I mean, I don't know, but assuming all your steps are correct. Uh, then, the reason you're probably getting different answers is because this is, and pretty ambiguously defined, right? W doesn't mean, isn't a very specific thing, right? Because, again, here you're, you're using W to mean A did the dishes. Here you're using W to mean B did the dishes. So I think that is causing it. Okay, sounds like a good idea, yeah, I got it, sounds like a good idea in the chat, so, that means we are good to move on. Let us try this question, this is one that was from the textbook, but it wasn't assigned, so I just thought it'd be fun, actually not that complicated, but it looks a little bit scary. So, let's, uh, let's go through it. Any last questions about the dishes question, before I move on? If you think of something later, then you can tell me too. Okay. So, you choose a point, A B uniformly at random, so all the points are totally valid choices at random on, in the unit square, right? So the unit square is just X goes from zero to one, Y goes from zero to one. What is the probability that the equation A X squared plus B X? Sorry, A X squared plus X plus B equals zero has a real solution? Seems like so much is going on, right? Really, it's really not that bad, though. How do we know if, if a quadratic has real solutions? Well, we know it has real solutions if, um, if, okay, we know the quadratic A X squared plus B, uh, I'll use different symbols. Um, we should, uh, can't use, I'll just use the X, A X squared plus B X plus C equals zero, has real solutions if B squared minus four A C is greater than or equal to zero. So, um, if that's a positive number. So, we'll just apply that here, right? For us, this is capital A, for us, this is one, and for us, this is B. Right, like, for, for this quadratic. So that would look like one squared minus four A B is greater than equal to zero. Right, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna write this up here, just to not waste space, actually, my face will be in the way, so I'll just put it there. Um, so, actually, I'll move. Okay. So, we just want to rearrange this now, basically. So I have, uh, one, one squared minus four A B is greater than equal, so one minus four A B is greater than equal to zero, one over four is greater than equal to A B. Right? Uh, as long as this property holds, then we will have real solutions. So in other words, um, you can, it's like your XX, so, uh, yeah, so in other words, as long as one over four A is greater than equal to B. Right? Then, we have a, uh, then it's fine, then, like, we will have real solutions. That's what I mean by it is fine. Um, so, the way you calculate this, right, is you think about, well, uh, the, the unit square here, right? We imagine this graph like this. Right? Well, if I were throwing a dart against this one-by-one square, right? Uh, what is the probability that I land somewhere where this is true? Well, I have to figure out how big that zone is, right? If that zone is bigger, then I have a higher probability. If that zone is smaller, I have a lower probability. If that zone is exactly half the graph, then I have a fifty percent chance. The answer is fifty percent. It's not exactly half, but we got to figure out the area of that, and so, the answer, I do want to draw it properly, just so I don't have a mistake here. The answer is that it's, it's a reciprocal graph, right? It's a reciprocal graph, one over X, Y Y equals one over four X is basically what we're drawing here. Right? And, we need our Y value, the B value, to be less than it, so it's this zone right here. We need to figure out the area of this piece. So, the probability, right, that, uh, the, the real solutions, real solution equals the probability, um, that, again, if you think about it in terms of darts, like, this, this is not a very mathematical way of thinking about it, but the probability that if I randomly throw a dart, and it'll guaranteed to land in that square somewhere, that, what's the probability that it lands in the shaded region? And I'll use that point. Well, that's the probability, uh, that's, it's equal to the area of the shaded region. Region. Divided by the total area. Right? That ratio, again, if the shaded region is half, then there's a fifty percent chance. If the shaded region is half the total area, then there's a fifty percent chance that my random dart will land somewhere where, where this is true, but but if it's less or if it's more, it's obviously more, right? So we got to figure out that area. Great. How to figure out this area? Well, we integrate, we integrate the function, what do we integrate? Make sure I'm gonna say the right thing. Um, we integrate. Yeah, okay, let's just do this quickly. Um, so, we break this into kind of two zones, because we have kind of, kind of two functions. Almost, almost like five thirty-two, so let's pretend we're doing five thirty-two work as well. Um, so we have two zones here, right? We have this function, upper bound, and we have this function. So the first one is we integrate from zero to this point right here, right? Well, we got to figure out where that point is, right? So that's, we got to figure out this, this X value here. Um, by the way, total area is one. One by one. Um, so, uh, well, there's lots of ways you can figure this out, right? But we want to figure, pretty much set, uh, set X equal to, we want to solve for X, we have the equation Y equals one over four X. Uh, solve for X, we know Y is one, right? So, four X equals one, X equals one over four. I'll just say. We have one of. That, th- this right here is just to find, I can draw a better box. Marginally better. That's just to find that one. So, the, the area, the, the area, the shaded region, which is the probability we're looking for. Real solutions, right? Because, uh, dividing by one, so it's just that area that we care about. Um, is the, well, it's two integrals, integral from zero to zero point two five of one DX plus the integral from zero point two five to one of one over four X. Right? So, this first integral is just zero point two five, plus this other integral, I didn't, that's like, we can do it if you'd like, but it's, it's basically just, uh, one over four lawn. Like, actually, it's done, lawn absolute value, um, uh, X evaluated from, uh, zero point two five. Right? So this is zero point two five plus one over four lawn or plus one over four lawn, one over four. Um, and, that's it. Oh, which is, yeah. Yeah, why is it that? I don't know why it's that. That's a good question. Uh, lawn one is zero. So, this is, the answer is zero point two five plus one over four lawn, one over four. You could simplify that. Um, great. That, that's the answer. That answer, whatever, let's see what that is approximately. So, uh, zero point two five plus one over four lawn. Uh, oh, I get a negative answer, that doesn't make sense, but that is the answer in the, oh, sorry.
Minus one over four lawn of one over four?
Uh,
Isn't it supposed to be subtracted?
Yes, it's supposed to be subtracting. Yes, it is, it's supposed to be subtracted, yes. So I get, you know.
Oh, in case you're talking, we can't hear you, by the way.
Me? I, you, you.
I can hear you just fine.
I can hear.
Everybody else can hear me. I don't know how to, I don't know how to communicate that to him. Uh, yeah, there you go. Um, perfect. So, uh, yeah, approximately zero point six. It's approximately sixty percent of the. So briefly summarize what I did in this part question to solve it, yeah, of course, right? Uh, so, okay, more questions, but, uh, let me just summarize first. So, um, we have, we're choosing a random point inside here, right? So what is the probability that some property holds, right? Well, we got to figure out what area in here, um, is where the property holds, right? What proportion of this total area? I think the best way is to think about it in terms of a dart, right? Like, you're just throwing a dart, guaranteed to fall in the square. So, what are the, what is the chance that it's going to land somewhere that this property holds? Well, okay, first of all, we have to define the property more mathematic, well, this is mathematically, but in just a simpler equation, or inequality. And then, in terms of this, since it's a graph, we just find the area. The area is going to be that probability. The, the area of the shaded region divided by the total area is going to be that prob- probability. Um, so, the total area is one, so we just need to find the area of the shaded region, and then, from there, it's just integration. That's kind of, that's kind of my summary. If that doesn't make sense, I'll try to explain some other.
Could you explain the stuff in the green that you did beforehand, how you figured out one over four greater than or equal to E B?
Like this guy, right? Like this stuff here?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
This, this you just have to know, this is like, you have to know this, like, this is, this is the condition, so that a quadratic has real solution. Right? And then, the quadratic they gave us was capital A, capital A, X squared, one X plus, uh, B. Right? That's, that's the quadratic they gave us. So I substituted that, oops. I substituted that into this equation, and then I have one squared minus four A B, and then rearranged. Do you want me to explain anything more particular than that?
That makes sense, that makes sense.
That's good, okay.
Um, sorry, can I ask a question?
Go for it.
After you go, after you have one over four is greater than equal to A B, your next step is to put one over four A is greater than equal to B up. Uh, can you explain what, why you did that step?
I, I just want to be able to, like, graph it, like, Y, Y equals F of X, so B is kind of like a Y value, and A is like an X value, right?
Okay.
So I, I just wanted to be able to have it as a graph, like, Y equals something.
Okay, okay.
Uh, okay, uh, so, more question? Um, why is the subtraction here? That's just like integration, I, that was my mistake, like, yeah, this is supposed to be, this is supposed to be a mine.
Um, I, I have a question.
Yes, go for it.
Um, how did you know you had to, uh, make some sort of semicircle, uh, right above the, the first rectangle?
A semicircle, where is a semicircle? Like this guy?
Yeah, like the quarter circle.
Oh, that's like, uh, it's not really a quarter circle, it's like, it's the graph, it's the graph of one, like, F of X. F of X equals one over, you know, K X, whatever, some, some constant K, so four X. It approximately looks like this, and that, I just know that, that it looks like this, and the reciprocal function, but it has like an asymptote on this.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all, yeah, there was no, yeah. But yeah, just to be clear, it's not a circle, because, yeah, that would, that would be confusing if it was a circle, it's just the graph of the, this function.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Um, okay, let's see, uh, how did you know where to put the line where the shaded region ends? Like, this line like that, yeah. I could have, I could have been more, like, like, mathematical, like, I didn't have to be right here. I assumed that the graph will pass through the square before one, right? Uh, what I could do is I could just do a couple of test points, if I want to be a little bit, little bit more careful with how I'm doing this, like, I could do a couple of test points of, okay, what does, um, you know, where exactly does this cross over? I, I did a test point, I did one test point there. And, uh, I know for a fact that it'll cross over here above the X axis, because this graph has an asymptote. So, I, all I really needed was that point, and I found that point. That point was one quarter one. So that's how I knew. How did you know to get the area of the shaded region and not the clear region? Because the shaded region is where this is true. It's where, you know, the, it's where we have, um, so our, our equation is one over four, eh, you can think of it like one over four X greater than equal to Y, so Y, the Y value is smaller than this curve, right? Y value, so, so in this region, the Y value is smaller than the curve. In the clear region, the Y value is greater than the curve, but then we want though, right? So in that region, we would have, um, complex solutions for the quadratic, but here, in the last time, we have a real solution. Say if the equation was one over X, would the probability just end up being one? Maybe, is the integral? Uh, what, yeah. Yeah, yes. Because, one over, one over X looks like this. That's what one over X looks like. So all these points are less than that curve, right? But someone just asked, what if the function was one over X? Like, what if, what if this ended, like, what if there was no four there, basically, right? How, it doesn't matter how, pretend there was no four there. What is the probability? Yeah, the probability would be one, because again, the curve looks like this, so every point in the square is below the curve, so you'd have a hundred percent chance of getting something that fits the condition. Does, does that, hopefully that makes sense? Okay. Perfect. So, um, uh, if there's no more questions about this one, I will continue. Uh, what do I have next? What time is it? Seven sixteen, we got. So, uh, the next one I want to do is like a series one. Probably won't get through all of these, so I'll start doing other questions after, but, um, so, da, da, da. Thank you, Ethan, yes, I'm happy you enjoyed the question. Thought it was fun, I saw it in the textbook, it's also not like, it's not crazy, so. A little weird. Um, okay, let's try, let's try this question. So here, you and I play the following game. I toss a coin repeatedly, the coin is unfair, so the probability of heads is P. The game ends the first time that two consecutive heads, uh, two consecutive heads, H H, in sequence, or two consecutive tails, 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 uh, are observed. If I win, heads, heads is observed, and if you win, tails, tails is observed. Given that I won the game, find the probability that the first coin toss resulted in a head. Great, so let's, um, yes. Fish knew had troubles with this one, so let's go through it together. Um, let's define our events. A is the probability that I win. But, pro, can I spell probability? How many Bs? No, probability that I won. Uh, H is the probability uh, that, uh, the first coin toss coin toss was, was heads. Forgive my, uh, forgive my, um, handwriting, yes. I'm happy I'm not alone in not being able to spell things. Um, okay, so, um, figuring this out now, we want, based on the question, we want the prob- if I, given that I won the game, so probability that the first coin toss was heads, given that I won the game, that's what we're looking for, right? Based on the events that I have to find. Um, yeah, for the first, which is what we're looking. Yeah, right, and then, there a part B? No, there's no, there's no part B. Yes, that's what we're looking for, good, okay, just making sure. Everything's fine. Yes, so. Yeah, okay, so, that's our goal. Now, there is a roundabout way of doing this, though, right? Because probably the first, uh, can we redefine the probability that the first coin toss was heads to a different variable? H is defined differently in the question. Or does it matter? Oh, yeah, like, like, I'm saying H, yeah, like, sure, we can do a different variable. I'll say, probably the first coin toss, I don't know, C, first coin toss is, I don't know. It does not matter, like, the probability of H, yeah, okay, okay, I, I guess, I guess I should define it differently, because here they've defined, thi- this is what makes it different, like, they've already defined H as P, which is the probability of independent event of getting heads, so call it C. So, probability of H given A, okay. I don't know anything about this, I don't know any probabilities here, right? I guess I probably have C given A. Um, so, my strategy here is to, like, when I first saw this question, uh, I said, okay, let me just start thinking about what are the possible games that can play? Right? What are the possible games that, that can happen here, right? Well, okay, let's assume that the first, um, let's assume that the first, uh, let's assume C, right? That the, the first coin toss was heads, and let's also assume, like, that, uh, well, yeah, let's just assume the first coin toss was heads. What are the possible games that can play? Well, uh, it can be heads, heads, that would be the simplest games. It could be heads, tails, well, game wouldn't end, right? So then it may be after this, you get heads, heads, right? Uh, you could also get, um, heads, tails, heads, tails, heads, heads. And this is, this is, I guess, sorry, I guess I'm assuming more things here. I'm assuming that I, that the first coin toss was C and I won the game, right? So basically, So basically, I'm, I'm looking at the events that um, uh, uh, A and C is what I'm looking at, right? I won the game and the first coin toss was head. Right? Well, what is the probability of this happening, right? What is the probability of this happening? Well, given, given that the first coin toss is guaranteed to be a head, right? Let's just say, let's, like, we're only looking at events right now. Where the, but this continues by the way, like, that's not all the event. Let's continue. Um, given that we're saying, uh, the first coin toss was heads, right? What is the probability that I win here? Well, P, cause I'm just focusing on this again. The, these are just guaranteed in my hypothetical situation. I'm just guaranteeing the first coin toss was a head. Probably that I win the game after that is P. Here it's T, uh, uh, Q, right? Q, uh, just define Q as one minus P. U equals one minus P. So we have Q. No, sorry. Yeah, I don't know why they wrote it like, okay, so sorry. So it's, is Q, P, and then P again, right? That would be, that would be our solution there. And then here it would be um, Q, P, Q, P, and then P again. And so on, right? You would keep doing this over and over and over again, right? So you would essentially have, uh, you know, on the nth one, you would have Q, P to the power of N, right? At times P. Right? So you start with a, you start with a heads guaranteed and you keep alternating tails, heads, tails, heads, tails, heads. And you end finally on another P. So what am I looking at here? But what am I like, I'm, I'm investigating these, these possible cases. What am I really looking at here? I'm looking at the probability that I win the game, given that heads is what was called. Right? So, sorry, given that, sorry, I should be clear. Given that C, which means the first coin toss was a head. Yes.
So where's the, what is the first call? Like what is the first vertical line that you drew on the heads?
Uh, vertical, what's the vertical line I drew on the heads? Like the?
Yeah, the circle.
Oh, like this, this? I just mean like those are guarantee, in my hypothetical where I'm calculating the probabilities, I'm saying, given that that happened, I'm just guaranteeing that the, the first coin toss was a heads. I'm just drawing the circle, meaning like lock that in. That's not part of the probability. That's just locked in. That's the truth. That's like a fact. So I'm looking at, yeah.
Just a question real quick.
Yeah.
Um, where you wrote Q, P to the power of N times P? That doesn't relate with the first one being heads all the time. That just relates to everything after the first event.
Yes, yeah, because we're, because uh, what I'm investigating here is given that the first coin toss was a head.
Okay.
That's probably that I. Right? Well, this probability, right, is the probability of this happening, plus the probability of this happening, plus the probability of this happening, on and on and on and on. Right? That's, that's what I'm looking at here. The probability of like, the, this is the outcome in which I win. Again, given, given that the first coin toss was a head. Um, it's this probability, this probability, this probability. So it's basically um, a P plus Q, P and then P again. So I'll write this. Q, P. I'll write this actually. Okay, now, Q, P to the one times P. Plus Q, oh, I'm covering it, aren't I? Q, P squared times P. Basically, and duh, duh, duh. Basically, guaranteeing the first one is a heads, then alternate tails, heads, tails, heads, tails, heads until I get P. I get a, a heads with probability P. And then again, after that, I get probability P of getting a heads. It's just kind of representing how many times I, how many times I alternate and then we get them. Uh, to the N might, like, is this that minus one? Uh, never again, yeah, N minus one. Yeah. This is N equals one, N equals two, N equals three, duh, duh, duh. This is like, yeah, I did, the third, I don't know, yeah. N doesn't really matter. It's kind of just an indexing variable, just indexing which one. But that's correct. Yeah, the probability that, I don't even know what the label, but it's, it's like, it's just an indexing variable of like, which option? Here's our first option. I get heads, heads. Here's our second option. I get heads, tails, heads. Here's our third option, I guess. Heads, tails, heads, tails, heads, heads. That's a good way to think about it, right? Heads guaranteed. Tails, heads, tails, heads, and then heads. Here's tails, heads. Right? Just how many times am I alternating? So we now want to write this as some sort of probability, right? So we're going to use our infinite series to, to work this out. I'll factor out a P, right? So I'll factor out a P. So we have one plus Q, P plus Q, P squared plus duh, 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 right? Uh, yeah, geometric distribution, kind of. Yeah, it is kind of a geometric. I don't think this, like, I don't think yeah, I guess you could use geometric distribution to solve this. Um, but uh, uh, that's like, yeah, that is what you're doing here basically. Like I'm not going to call it that, but that is what you're doing here basically. Uh, it's just that you're, you're, you're looking for the first event of heads, heads. Usually geometric, you're looking for the first time an event happens. But here we're looking for the first time heads, heads happen, which is an event. They all end in heads because that's how you end the game. I'm looking at this probability. I win, given that the first one was heads. So heads, heads is how I win. The game ends with heads, heads. That's what it means for me to win. If the other person wins, that means that it would end in tails, tails. Um, yeah, okay. So, so I have this infinite series, blah, blah, blah. And let, let's look at, like, let's look at the, the formula sheet. Um. We put this here. I'll just, I'll find the formula sheet here. Is this the updated one? It is not. So the formula sheet is this. So I guess it's uh, it's this, it's this first case that we have, right? So we go from, oh, sorry, if I write it down, it's going to be P times um, the sum. N goes from zero uh, to infinity of Q, P to the N. That's that first case, right? Which is P times one over one minus um, Q, P, which is P over one minus Q. So that's our probability. That's our probability that I, probability that I win. Right? Given that the first coin toss was a heads is P over one minus Q, P. What is the best way to know that we're dealing with a series problem? It's when you, when you when you can figure out. So you have an infinite number of outcomes. You have to have an infinite number of outcomes, right? But we do, there's infinite many games you can play here. But we can assign a probability to each one. I can figure out the probability of each outcome here, right? In general, if it's going to take, you know, if it's, if it's in this pattern here, right? If, if N equals some N, this is the probability of that event happening. Which is basically alternate, 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 get heads of. So yeah, that's uh, that's, that's kind of. So we found one probability, right? That's something, right? Like we've made a little bit of progress. We figured out that A, probably that I win, given that um, the first coin was a heads is this. Well, I'm looking for something pretty similar, right? I'm looking for probability that the first coin was a head, heads, given that I won. So we can relate these two using Bayes' theorem, right? Which is probability that's of C given A, probability of A, A given C, times probability of C over probability of A. So now I just, I, I have to figure out these guys. Once I figure out those guys, I'm done. That's easier said than done, but uh, that's, that's the process. Would you be able to scroll upwards to the first, the first part slightly cut off? Yeah, sorry. Is this? Yeah, if my face is ever covering anything, I can make it smaller. Yeah, I might be too big. I'll make it a little bit smaller. You don't need to see me too much. That'll help a little bit. Um, okay, so uh, great. Now we have a, we have a, we have a strategy, right? We got to find probability of C. We got to find probability of A. Um, how do they do it? I don't remember how they do it. Oh yeah, okay. So probability of A will be our next adventure. Probability of A, which is what is the probability that I win, basically, right? That's the, what is the probability that I win? Well, probably that I win, so this is our, this is our thing. So probably that I win. Well, there's only two possibilities. Again, from my perspective, there's only two possible like, I can split all the cases in which I win into two classes. Either the first coin was heads or the first coin was tails. So what's the probability that I win is the probability that I win, given the first coin was heads, times the probability the first coin was heads. Plus the proba- probably that I win, given the first coin was tails, times the probability that the first coin was tails. Right? Rule of total probability. Again, from my perspective, there is only two possibilities. Either the first coin was heads or the first coin was tails. So this accounts for the heads and this accounts for the tails. A given C, we already figured that out, right? A given C, we already know this is P over one, one minus Q, P. Probability that the first coin was heads is P. That's the definition. Like the, the probability of the coin being heads is P. Now, probability that the first coin was hea-, uh, that I win, given the first coin was tails, that's more complicated. Got to figure that out, right? Um, we'll, we'll figure that out. And then probability the first coin was tails, that's Q. Right? Because one minus P, which I've defined as Q. Okay, we still have to figure this guy out, right? Still got to figure this guy out. So let's, let's investigate that a little bit now, right? So probability like sub, sub question, probability of A, given that the first coin was tails. We're going to do a similar process. Right? We're going to say, okay, okay. So I had some success here, right? Let's say now again, I'm investigating all the outcomes where this is true. What are, what are all the outcomes where this is true? Let, let's try it. So the first coin has to be tails. That's given. But I still win. So it's the, the simplest option is that I get tails, heads, heads. All right, the next simplest is again, I start with tails. That's what I'm guaranteeing with this. Now I get heads, right? Uh, I can't get tails, because if I got tails, then I wouldn't win, right? So I have to get heads. Tails, heads, heads, right? Again, I'm not accounting for where the other person wins, because that's not part of the probability that I want. The probability that I want is I win, given the first coin was tails. So tails, heads, tails, heads, tails, heads, tails, heads, tails, heads, tails, heads, heads, tails. Sorry, two, two heads here. Uh, tails, heads, heads, and so on. Right? Well, what's the probability of this happening? What's the probability of this happening? Given, given that this guy has to win, but that, that uh, tails has to be first. Well, the probability of this happening is P squared. Probability of this happening is uh, PQ times P squared, right? P times P is P squared. P times Q times P times P. Is that? Here we have PQ squared. Again, I, I alternate twice, PHT, HT, and at the end I have a P squared again, from the heads, heads. And probability of this happening is PQ cubed this time. HT, 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 and at the end of it, we have P squared again. Right? So, so generally here, right? Um, again, this probability will be the sum of all these, like the probabilities of all these outcomes. Right? It's an infinite sum. I can assign a probability to all the outcomes though. That's important. So um, uh, let's do it. So the pro-, this probability here, probability of A given C prime is P squared plus PQ, P squared plus PQ squared, P squared, plus PQ cubed, P squared, and so on. There's one, one coin at a time, one coin at a time. These are like sequences of heads and tails. Someone asked, are two coins being tossed at the same time? So just one, one coin at a time. And these are like possible sequences of the game we can play. Just again, reminder, the game works like I win if there's heads, heads. The other person wins if it's tails, tails, anywhere says tails, tails. So I win because of these endings here. That's why the game ends. So let's work out the probability. I'm going to factor out a P squared. I'm going to get one plus PQ to the one, plus PQ squared, plus PQ cubed, plus duh, 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 right? Which is P squared times the sum. N goes from zero to infinity of PQ to the N. Sure, for the second line, why not write P cubed? I just want to show like the pattern. That's why. So that's why I didn't write P cubed, Q. But yeah, sure. You, like you probably, it's a little bit more clear what the pattern is here though, because we have a P squared on the end. And then I can factor out the P squared, right, afterwards. And then you can see that it's just PQ. Now there's another PQ. Now there's another PQ multiplying in. It's just a little nicer to see the pattern here. Yeah, why doesn't the first line have a Q? Because we're saying, given that the first, given that the first toss was tails. That's given. That's set. Right? There's no probability there. We're, we're assuming that that's true. That's in this probability that we're finding. So we don't, we don't account for it. There's no probability there. That's a hundred percent chance that there'll be a tails. The probability comes after. Right? That's kind of. That's the outcomes we're looking at is. Um, so, so yeah, this is, that's that. And now again, we can use the formula. This is P squared times one over one minus PQ, just from the formula sheet. Which is P squared over one minus PQ. That's it. There's a probability. That's probability of A given C prime. So finally, we can finish this off. So we can say, I just say finishing. Finishing. N minus one, uh, no, I think it should be N, because, yeah.
Uh, I was just going to say, if we scroll up, do we not have to consider the fact uh, that T um, is Q? Uh, for the very first line, do we not have to multiply that, all that by Q?
Like, yeah, you're saying it should be, you're saying it should be Q here, right?
Yeah.
And that's because of this T.
Yeah.
This T in, in these outcomes, I'm looking at all the outcomes where tails is the first one. That's what this like, given C prime means, right?
So we don't have to account for.
We don't account for, because that's set in, we're looking at all the outcomes where that's true.
Okay, okay.
There's no probability involved with that, right? The proba-, someone said in the chat, the probability of Q happening first in these outcomes is 100% because I've said it has to start with, with, has to start with uh, T. So sure, you can, you can multiply a one here if you want, just to say a hundred percent chance that it'll start with T.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
No problem. Yeah. And I don't think this is N minus one. I think this is right. Because N does start at, because we want it to be PQ to the zero first. It's not, it's not one or two. Anyways, um, so uh, finally, we can write here that this is P squared over one minus PQ. Uh, and that's the probability of A. So we're not like, remember, that, this is our goal. We have now found this and this. Probability of the first coin, we know this is P, right? That's already. So we have now, let's simplify this a little bit. This is P squared over one minus Q, P plus Q, P squared over one minus, let's write Q, P. Which is P squared plus Q, P squared over one minus Q, P. You can simplify that more with a factor or something else, but it starts at N equals zero. That's why it's, yeah, that's right. It's, I don't know where the sum went. Yeah, so it's an N equals. So now coming back up here, again, this is the probability we're looking for, right? This is the actual question. Uh, come on. Want to do it for me? There we go. That's what we were looking for, right? So uh, which is probably, yeah. So let's just combine everything now, right? Probability of A given C, we figured that out. Probably that I win, given that the first coin toss was heads is P over one minus Q, P. Over one minus Q, P. Probability that the first coin toss was head is P. That's the definition of what P is. Uh, and probability of A, we just figured out is here, P squared. I guess I'll factor out a P squared. So P squared times one plus Q over uh, one minus U, P. Yeah. Hope that's right. P squared. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, good. Um, so, so just simplifying, this is P squared over one minus Q, P over uh, P squared over one minus Q P times one plus Q. These guys. Come on. One note gets annoyed at me every once in a while. There you go. Those just cancel out. So it's one minus, one over one plus Q. One plus Q, sorry. Sorry, what am I writing? This is like, this is a uh, this is a Q. I was writing a row. This is a, this was a Q. The one plus Q. And this is one over one plus one minus P, like, just to have it in terms of P, right? That's, because that's what the question gave. So it's two minus P. And that's a probability. That's the answer. One over two minus P. So this question, like, I, I did it in a specific order, like on purpose, right? Cause like, you, you probably wouldn't know to just start. Because like, you probably wouldn't know to just start here. I wouldn't know to just start here. You'd start this question by just playing around with figuring out what are the possibilities, right? Okay, well, what are the possible games you can play? I don't know, let's assume that the first coin started with heads, and let's assume that I win. Right? That's kind of the environment we're looking at here. Okay, well, let's just try some of them. Okay, well, I can actually assign probabilities. I can actually assign probabilities to each of these, right? And further, like, I have a formula, basically, like, I know what it is. So the probability of something like this happening, I don't want to be clear, like, that's, that's, that's what our goal is, but that's not the environment for it, this is kind of the outcomes we're looking at. So I can actually find this probability by just taking the sum of all these. I can deal with infinite series by doing that, blah, blah, blah. Okay, I found something, I have a probability. Well, I also know my goal, I can relate this to my goal using Bayes' theorem, right? And from there, it's more clear what's the next steps, right? Like, okay, now I know I have to find probability of A. Okay, how do I find probability of A? Total probability. How do I find probability of C? That's just P. So yeah, that's kind of logic, and okay, we have to do this process again to figure out that stuff, but that's kind of the logic of it. Would I be able to come up with that on a test? I don't know, we'll see. No, I did not get this first try. For, how did I get, oh yeah, how did I get one over one minus PQ for probability of A given C? This guy? Or, yeah, like, I didn't get one over, I got P over, but, so it's this process here. Oh, for probability of A given C prime. For probability of A given C prime, I got P squared over one minus UP. So this, he's, well, it's basically this formula, right? This series turns into this, and the P squared comes out in the front, so that's, that's all from this equation. So how did I get this equation? Well, I just looked at all the outcomes that match what I'm describing here, and took the sum of all their probability. What is the probability we see a question with similar difficulty on the test? Like... I don't, I hope not, I certainly hope not. Let's just, let's start with that, I certainly hope not. I, well, like, my, like, I took this course, it wasn't exactly the same course, so I don't know exactly what it was like. For, like, I didn't, did they do this in the spring, I'm not sure. For statistics, it was, like, we had a very easy midterm, we had a very easy one. But also, there was, it was kind of other stuff. We had like, lots and lots of different probability distributions, so...
Adam?
Yes?
Have you ever had this problem before?
No, I have never had this problem before, I didn't have it in first year.
Can you also go to the, like, the solution on the last page?
Yeah, like, what?
The last page?
Like, last question here, this one?
The final solution.
Yeah, for this?
At the end of it.
For this question, or?
For the last question, at the end of it?
Oh, this one, like, what is the final answer for this question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And can you also make it a little smaller, because I cannot really see you?
Oh, like?
Like your face covering, yeah.
Oh, it's like, yeah, here, like, there, can you see it now?
Okay, yeah, 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 thank you.
Oh wait, isn't this for finding probability of A? Are we supposed to find probability of C given A?
I found probability of A, here. Probably ended there, probably of C given A, I've plugged everything in, simplified.
Okay, okay, got it.
Yes, my notes will be posted, I usually post them on Discord, but if you're unable to see on Discord, I don't know, I'll put a link in the description of the video.
Are these all the questions for today, or are there more that we're gonna go through?
No, I have more questions, I have more questions, yeah. I have lots more, actually, we're not gonna do all of them, so... I think I want to do this one next. Just like, finding the CDF of this. But yeah, I wanted to do a series question, so... So yeah, what is the probability we see a similar question on the test? I don't think we're gonna see a similar difficulty question, but I think we will see a series question, where you have to deal with a series. So the logic of how I did this question, hopefully will be applied. Okay, so let's, let's, let's try this one. So, problem 12 from the textbook, that actually is a discrete random variable with the following PMF. So that's the PMF, find the CDF. Let's first of all explain what the PMF is, right? Probability mass function is, right, it's a function, right? Like, so I'll just draw it, like, it's a function, it's a box, right, EMF. Which you input some particular value for your, for your random variable, and it outputs some probability, probability that X equals. Right? It tells you what's the probability of you seeing that value for the random. CDF, right, cumulative density function, or is it distribution function? Either density or distribution, is very similar, so you, again, put in some X value, some of your random variable, right? It's also a function, right? So it's CDF, and, but this time, it's telling you the probability that you see anything less than it. Less than or equal, I forget, less than or equal. Less than it, I'll say, it's probably less than equal. It's like in my notes, yeah, I think, I think it's less than equal. I really shouldn't forget this. Thing here. Less than equal. Yeah, re-explain what's on the screen right here? Is that what you mean? Yeah. So we have two functions, when we're talking about random variables, we have two functions. We have the PMF and the CDF. When we're talking about discrete random variables, we have two functions, the PMF and the CDF. PMF is a function, so it has input and output. You input some value for your random variable, and out comes the probability of seeing that value in your random. The CDF is, the prob, you still put in a value for your random variable, but it's the probability you see anything less than or equal to that, from your random. Right? So if I were to graph this PDF, right? I don't, I don't know if you graph very many, I think it's really important to see the graph of these things. Especially when you get to continuous and you're doing integrals and stuff like that. Seeing the graph makes a lot of sense, like, everything makes a lot of sense. So, the, like, let's say this is, I don't know, let's say this is one. So this is like our X-axis, right? So this is, well... This is one, so this is negative one, negative two, one, two, three, that's as far as I need, okay, okay. So, yeah, let's like, let's work it out. For these questions, should we plot a curve or just list discrete values? Well, I mean, it says find and plot, so, but the final answer, find and plot. But like, you don't have, I'm just plotting this so you, you know, if we get a better understanding of what's happening here. So for X equals zero, it's 0.2, so this would be like, 0.2, so it's like approximately there. For X equals negative 0.3, yeah?
Sorry, quick question, for the CDF and PMF, do they have different type of graphs?
Yeah, they'll have different graphs, they'll have different graphs, for sure.
Okay.
They'll definitely have different.
What are you plotting right now?
I am plotting these PMF.
The PMF, okay.
Yeah. Probability mass function. Probability mass function is a discrete function, right? You don't connect it with a curve, because we, the inputs, right? The inputs are, you just say where, like, what particular X value are you talking about? Right? What particular possible outcome from your random experience, experiment? Then, I hope I'm applying this right, this is one, this is 0.5, 0.75, 0.25. 0.25. So this is 0.2, 0.3, 0.2, 0.2, 0.1, that's it. So you can think of these like little, just arrows, just like points, right? Where you have some particular value of the function, but nowhere else, right? So that's our PMF. Our PMF is a discrete function, because it doesn't make sense, like, a random variable can, a discrete random variable, right? You can't ask, like, what's the probability of having, whatever, 0.5, right? Of X being 0.5, because that's not in the range, or that's not in the domain of the discrete random variable. Continuous you can't, but for discrete you can't. So, the PMF is just like these arrows that pop up for these particular. But, really importantly, the sum of all of these arrows, if you stack them on top of each other, it's gonna be one, right? It's gonna reach one, because what's the probability that something happens is one? If these are the only possible outcomes, the probability that one of these things happen, when you have, when you run this random experiment, is one. Something's gonna happen. Anything. So these all have to add to one. So let's take a look at our, let's take a look at our CDF, cumulative distribution function. CD, there's also CDF in continuous, which is cumulative density function, so... There is no way to know which one you're talking about, except from context. So basically, the CDF is a continuous function, it's defined for all X value, right? So let's take a look at it, right? I'm gonna start by plotting, and then from plotting it, we're gonna get the equation. I think that's like a little bit of a better way of doing it. We're gonna plot it here. Remember, it's the probability of getting any X value less than this X value. So if I, again, this is, this is one, right? And this zero, whatever, I'll just mark it 0.5, 0.75, 0.25, negative one, negative two, negative three, one, two, three. So, well, let's start, let's like, let's move in from this way. So what is the probability, like, if I plug this in, this X value into the function, what is the probability that I get an outcome from my experiment with a random variable less than negative four? Zero! There is no way, the outcome from my random experiment, right? The, yeah, X is in negative two, negative one, zero, one, two, right? That's what this is telling. Otherwise, it's probably zero, right? It's not gonna happen, so... There is no way that I'll be able to get anything less than or equal to negative four. Negative three, same thing. So this is at negative two, negative one, zero, one, two. But when we reach negative two, okay, now, what's the probability that I get anything less than or equal to negative two? Well, it's the probability of getting negative two, it's the only outcome that's in that range, right? So the function stays this level. If I, if I go a little further, there's no new probabilities here, right? It's zero all the way there. The probability that I get anything less than, like, negative 1.5 is still just the probability of getting negative two. But, when I reach negative one, all of a sudden now, okay, what's the probability that I get anything less than negative, less than or equal to negative one? Well, it's the probability of getting negative one and probability of getting negative two. Together, they make 0.5, so now I have a jump in my graph here. Right? All of a sudden, and there's open circle here and a closed circle there. So now, all of a sudden, you know, if I evaluate the CDF at negative one, the probability of getting anything less than or equal to negative one is negative two and negative one. Probability of getting negative two, probability of getting negative. These two arrows have stacked on top of each other to get 0.5. Right? So actually, I'll kind of draw that. So the purple will be PMF arrows, okay? The purple will be PMF arrow. So we got a little jump here, from this guy. We got another little jump from the first, like, these are the same two, and then we got another jump from there, right? Then when we get to, when we continue our function to the Y-axis, now, we have another jump, right? Which is of 0.2, so we're gonna get to 0.7, right? So now, we're gonna have another jump there, right? Maybe I'll just number these quickly, this is number one, this is number two, this is number three, this is number four, this is number five. This is number one, this is also number one. This is number two, this is number three. And this height is made up of three arrows now. Number one, number two, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom in, because I'm not using my green real estate very well here, so I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. Move this down. Perfect. But now, our function's there, right? So I'm gonna keep moving, though, right? So my graph is gonna stay flat here until I get to one. At one, we have another jump, and jump up by 0.2, so I'm gonna be at 0.9 now, right? So this is where my new function's gonna be. And then finally, from 0.2, when I get to two, we're gonna go up by another 0.1, we're gonna finally end up here, and it's going to be continuous that way. And it's going to be continuous that way. So just to be clear, what's going on here, right? This, this value at one comes from the probability of getting negative two, which I'm gonna call arrow one. Probability of getting two. I guess I'll draw this a little bit differently. Getting one, that, which is arrow two, here we have arrow three, and here we have arrow four. And then this final probability comes from the sum of all of them, right? Da, 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 three, comes from the sum of all of them. And that sum necessarily has to be one, right? Necessarily. Yeah, you can draw open circles at the end, like, yeah, there's open circles. That sum has to be one. So the general shape of every CDF, yeah, of every CDF will be vaguely, vaguely like this. This is one, and this is zero. Obviously, that'll come in many different forms, but that'll be the general shape of every single media. Because if you, like, as you move further left, there's less and less cases that are less than or equal to this number, right? And as you move further to the right, there are more and more cases that are less than or equal to this outcome. Until eventually, you've passed all the possible outcomes and the probability is one. So yeah, so that's it, that's the plot of the CDF. Now, you don't have to draw these arrows, like, I'm drawing the arrows just like, related to the PMF, right? Like, where did, where do these, where do these values come from? Well, it's, it's, the final value comes from the sum of all of them, this value comes from the sum of the first four, some of the first three, some of the first two, some of the first three, but you don't have to draw those arrows. So now, to define this, the CDF will draw capital F, X, of X equals X, I don't know, I'll just write a little X here. Is a piecewise defined function. So there is one, two, three, four, five, six cases, right? The first case is zero, if X is less than negative two. Then we have, like, check this, yeah, we have the value, yeah, how about this? I'll draw it like this. I'll draw it kind of in my way first, and then we'll do the actual answer, this is not gonna be the actual answer. So then, we have arrow one, if X is between negative two and negative one. Then, we have arrow one plus arrow two if X is between negative one and zero. Then, we have arrow one plus arrow two plus arrow three. Move it over a little bit, just so that I don't make it too messy. And then, this is valid if X is between zero and one. Then, we have arrow one plus arrow two plus arrow three plus arrow four. Does not like it when I copy and paste. Plus arrow four, and this is valid if X is between one and two. And then finally, we have arrow, you get it. We have arrow one through five. Just a little arrow for five, and this is valid if X is greater than or equal to two. So that's your, that is your CDF. Now, what is this, what is this actually? Like, what is the actual answer to this question? Well, you just, you just, what are the value of those arrows, right? So it's 0.2, 0.3, 0.2, 0.2, 0.1, right? So it's zero for X is less than negative two. It's 0.2 for X is, whatever, negative two, less than or equal to X, less than or equal to negative one. The sum is 0.5 if X is between negative one and zero. So that's, that's, we're here now, or sorry, we're here now. I'm gonna move here, right? This is the sum of the first three, which is 0.7, so it's 0.7 if X is between zero and one. Now we'll move on to here, it's 0.9 if X is between one and two, and finally, it's one, necessarily, if X, yeah, if, what am I doing? If X is greater than or equal to two. And that's your CDF. But hopefully that makes sense graphically, what's happening here. It is like you're taking a sum, you're just adding up all the possibilities less than that value, or equal to that value, less than or equal to that. And hopefully, it's also clear, like, it makes sense at least, how this turns into an integral in continuous functions, right? Because here, we're just adding together all these little discrete little jumps, but in the continuous case, we're adding together a continuous amount of these little jumps, right? Because here, we're just adding together all these little discrete little jumps, but in the continuous case, we're adding together a continuous amount of these little jumps, right? So it naturally turns into an integral in um, in the continuous case. Okay, uh, there we go. That, I guess, is my last question, because it's eight o'clock, so time is up. I wanted to do a lot more, but that is all the time we had today. Um, so I'll stay around for a few more minutes, I'll I'll stop my recording. Uh, well, it's almost up at the end, I guess, but I'll I'll, I'll just uh, there for a few more minutes, but, yes.
Sorry, so for P, PMF, the arrows are in vertical and for CDF are in horizontal, right?
I I guess so, yeah, like the, like, yes, because a CDF is a continuous function, right? It's continuous, so you need to go to the side, right? Like, the the, you need to have a full graph here. But for PMF, it's better to think of these as like discrete little jumps that you're doing at these.
But also, would you suggest to like shade it out, like on the midterm or no?
To to do what exactly?
To shade, shade them out, like, when we're doing the CDF.
Yeah, what do you mean shade them out? Like, like how I have it here, these arrows here, or?
Yeah, so so like, we have a like a um, a series, can we like shade them out, like, from the bottom to the part?
Yeah, like, I I would say it's probably a good idea to write it like this, like, not with my arrow notation, but you could write it as like, zero point two, zero point two plus zero point five, or zero point three, or something like that, right?
Okay, but y- you don't also just to shade them out on the graph?
Yeah, you don't have like, you you mean like shaded like different, like, different darknesses?
Yeah.
Like, yeah, no, no, you don't have to do it like that, yeah.
Okay.
Um, Adam?
Yes.
Um, what's the value of the second arrow um, for the PMF?
Uh, it is zero point three.
Oh, zero point three, okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I got a bunch of questions. Uh, can you post recommended questions? Sure, I I mean, yeah, what are my recommended questions? Uh, yeah, I'll post the rest of them that I thought were interesting enough to for doing this live stream that I didn't get to do. So uh, that would include, uh, I'll post it with the solution. So that would include this one.
Should we get it on Discord or?
Whatever, I mean, I'll, I will, I will post it on Discord, and then I will uh, also put it in the description of the video.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so here is this one, other questions which I just thought were interesting and possibly relevant. Oops. That's the last. There's a Poisson one, it's a coin one, I don't know, whatever, and then a children one, like a family has N children. Can you write down the problems you wanted to complete but didn't have a chance to? Like, time's on my own, there you go. Can you send us the rest of the questions you didn't complete as well? There you go. For the distributions, did he cover Pascal distribution class? I don't think so. Or I might be wrong? I don't know if there's Pascal distribution, but I'd, yeah, no. Welcome. Should I ask you now about the dishes? We can in a second. Will you post your solutions for them? If not, it's fine. Here's a solution. I put, there's, there are not my solutions, but there are solutions. Um, yeah.
Uh, do you mind if you could just scroll up to like the very first question that you did, because I missed that part?
Yeah. Very first question that I did was, I looked at the formulas, oh, this one, I rolled the dice five times.
Yeah, that's the, okay, so, uh, well, like, what I'm, what I'm, uh, what I understood was how to get the sample space? Because that's just, uh, like, you roll the dice five times, so like, that's just six apart, right? Because you have like, uh, I think, uh, like, you have like, is it, I mean, there's like six sides in, like, you you can get six.
Every, every time you you run the experiment, there's six possible outcomes, right?
Yeah, six possible, yeah.
Right, exactly, so that time, six times, six times, six times, six is the.
Yeah, and then now I'm just wondering how you got like six times five, like, it looks like a factorial to me, like, just from the outside, so I'm wondering how you did this part.
So so basically, like, I'm looking for all the events, I'm looking for a complement, right? Which is the event that there is no repeated value, right? There is no repeated. So that means on the first die roll, it doesn't matter, I can get anything on the first die roll, six, I have six options for that. But on the next roll, I can, I only have five options to stay in this event. I can get anything except whatever I got in the first roll. If I got a two in the first roll, then I I can't get a two in the second roll, because then, I mean, it's, I I can possibly get it, but I won't be in this event anymore.
That just won't be a compliment anymore.
And the point is that I have to find all the, the, I have to find how many outcomes there are in this event.
I don't see like it being multiplied by one, what happened to the?
There's only five rolls, right? You only roll five times.
Oh, okay.
So you can multiply by one if you want, but that, that is, yeah.
It's just relevant, because it just, uh, just.
I don't roll six times, right? That's not, it's not six, right, so six options, the first one, five, four, three, and then two for the last.
Oh, thank you.
No problem. Uh, yeah, I, if you're in, I don't know, if you're in engineering, third year engineering, just message me on Discord if you'd like access to our Discord server, or if even you're not in third year engineering, you probably are seeing this course. I just realized that you're in this course, and you definitely are. Uh, you can just add me on Discord. And I can help you get in the server. Um. Uh, yes, my notes cover everything that is gonna be on the midterm, yeah, but don't, again, don't look at my M T H five fourteen notes, there's nothing there. It's only M T H four ten notes at the moment. What are the four or five type of questions you think of the exam? That's what I did right here. Thank you for the study session. You are very welcome and I. Um, no problem, Caleb. Hope you're doing good. So let's uh, yeah, um, do you wanna talk about this question now, Ahmed? You wanna try this one?
Yeah, that would be absolutely great, okay.
Sure, sure. Uh, let's see how you did it.
So it wouldn't mind me explaining like the events and the way I find them?
Yeah, well, I mean.
Unless you'd like to take a look at it first, I'm not sure, up to you.
Yeah, like, I I don't have, like, I don't have too much time, like, I do have something at eight thirty, so I have to go to, but uh, sorry, I need a little bit of break before that too, but anyways, we'll spend a few minutes, let's look here.
Okay.
Um, so it looks like how you defined wash, like W, is the event the event that the dishes get done.
Exactly.
Dishes get done, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that doesn't make sense, the, well, actually, hold on, does that make sense? But even the the first thing here, right? The probability that the dishes get done is equal to the probability, yeah, well, this is, this is, this is difficult, right? The probability that A does the dishes and the dishes get done.
No, so is that A sees the dishes?
Okay, that A sees the dishes and the dishes get done. Or B sees the dishes and the dishes get done. Or C sees the dishes and the dishes get done. Um.
If I may, yeah, I just have something to say.
Sure.
If B sees the dishes and the dishes also get done, that also includes the fact that A might have done the dishes.
Hold on, if B sees the dishes.
No, no, no.
So and the dishes are done, then that means that A possibly could have done it and B possibly could have done it.
Well, I think we, I think when we say B sees the dishes, I think that, I think we mean something a little bit more specific. I think we mean when B sees the dishes upon entering the kitchen.
Okay, okay, okay.
That, in that case, in that case, then, yeah, if we don't say that, then you're right, but I think that's what we're, we're imply, like, yeah, but you're right, we didn't specifically say that. Um, this doesn't really make sense to me, because we have W too many times here. Uh, what you mean is like A sees the dishes and A washes the dishes, B sees the dishes and B washes the dishes. Or C and C washes the dishes. It's like, you have more events here than you realize, right?
Okay.
W doesn't exactly fit for all of those.
So so the way I'm trying to think about is that if A sees the dishes and it's done, I put intersection W. But if B sees the dishes, it means that A didn't do it, and he would be the one doing it, so B would intersection W. So B saw it, and if he saw it, he would eventually do it. Does that mean?
Yeah, I'm.
Maybe it doesn't, hmm, makes sense.
Yeah, I think there may be a way to do it like this, where you say W is the event that the dishes get done by anyone, just to be clear, this is to get done by anyone.
Anyone, exactly, yeah.
Right, anyone. Uh, I don't know. This, I don't think this is right to begin with. You might get the right answer for some things. I don't think this is the proper way of writing it, that's the thing. Just because you mean multiple things by W here, or do you not mean, no, 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 you don't mean multiple things by W, no, 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 hold on. And then maybe you can write it like that. Is this true? The probability of wash, the dishes getting done is, well, it's, it's the probability, the probability of dishes getting done is. No, 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 we have an issue. Yeah, yeah, there's definitely an issue with writing it like that, because look at this. Look at this. Look at this. Uh, I can break this up, right, into uh, the probability that A does the dishes and the dishes are washed, sorry, A sees the dishes and the dishes are washed, plus the probability that um, B, that B sees the dishes and the dishes are washed, plus probability that C sees the dishes and the dishes are washed, minus the probability that A sees the dishes and the dishes are washed and B sees the dishes. Hmm, this is getting really complicated.
Yeah, I feel like everything else is going to be equal to zero, because it can be possible that A and B both do the dishes at the same time.
It is possible that A and B both see the dishes, though.
But not do it.
Or no, is that possible? Hold on, hold on. Yeah, yeah, it is possible for A and B to both see the dishes.
But not do it.
Not do it, but that's not what your event's saying here, right? A, A, A and W does not mean A did the dishes. A did the dishes. It just means that A saw the dishes. The dishes. And someone did the dishes. Right, does that make sense?
Yeah, but, sorry, how would you say if he also washed the dishes?
Yeah, I I don't know how you, like, that's, that's, like, that's how I define my events, right? My events were, A was the event that A did the dishes. Right, so based on this definition. See, he washed them. He sees the dishes. Yeah, I'll have to look at the professor's solution, because, yeah, I think Professor did something similar, right?
Yeah, 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 so he did like, he used the same equation. But I'm not sure, maybe it's not the best as an interpret.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I'll uh, I'll look more into it later, is that fine? I'll look more into it later.
Yeah, for sure, don't worry about it.
And then uh, we'll do that, but yeah, there's, there's definitely something up.
Would you want me to send it to you? I think I have them.
Yeah, the solution, sure, yeah, if you want to send it to me on Discord, sure. I I'm not gonna look at it this second, but I will definitely look at it later to.
Okay, okay.
In part, try to send something. Yes, thank you.
No problem.
Save here, okay. Okay, guys, well, I'll stop recording. That is my time for now.